Welcome and thank you for standing by. At this time, your lines have been placed on listen only until we open for questions and answers. Today's conference is being recorded. If you have any objections, you may disconnect at this time. I would now like to turn the conference over to Janet Gordon with the FDIC. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'm Janet Gordon, Associate Director of Community Affairs at the FDIC, and I'm based in Washington. We're very pleased to offer this Town Hall as an opportunity to present our most recently developed Money Smart for Small Business resource. The Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer Tools are intended to serve as a self-help resource for you so that organizations can more easily start teaching Money Smart for Small Business. We hope this resource helps you to host trainings using the fully scripted Trainee Trainer Instructor Guide and other materials that you'll learn about today. And of course, you can adapt them to meet your needs and those of your clients, adding your own unique information, adding information about your organization, and about your communities. We've received over 80 registrations for this event, including many local SBA staff members, so welcome to you as well. Our partnership with SBA goes beyond our co-branding of Money Smart for Small Business. We're very pleased to work with SBA and its resource partners to serve small businesses across the country in our community affairs work in many local communities. And we're also happy to facilitate the delivery of financial education for aspiring and existing entrepreneurs together. So today, I'm going to hand it over to an SBA colleague. We have Donald Smith from the SBA office in Washington as well. So Donald, please introduce yourself and join me in welcoming our invitees.
Thanks so much for the warm introduction. I'm Donald Malcolm Smith. I am the Director of the Office of Entrepreneurship Education here at SBA. The U.S. Small Business Administration is dedicated to increasing the capacity of entrepreneurs to contribute to the vitality of the American economy. We're a small agency, but we have a big mission, and we need partners to reach nascent and established entrepreneurs. So here at SBA, we have partners such as the Small Business Development Centers, SCORE, and the Women's Business Centers. SBA's resource partners are at the forefront of ensuring the success of America's entrepreneurs. Through their efforts, we're able to engage more than 1 million business owners each year. However, we have other partners. So in addition to our funded partners, we have significant partnerships with other federal agencies like the FDIC. Through our joint partnership, we developed the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum, and we're happy to introduce the new Trainee Trainer Module. It's our hope that through this partnership, we can reach entrepreneurs who are digital natives, who consume and can manage the entrepreneurship discovery process on their own. So welcome today and look forward to your engaging and learning how to make use of this valuable tool. And thanks so much again for the warm introduction.
Hello. I am Paula Diaz. I'm the Senior Community Affairs Specialist at the FDIC, also based in DC. And with me is John Olson, a Community Affairs Specialist from the Atlanta Region. Both of us will be providing an overview of our newest resource, the Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer Curriculum. We are projecting the actual Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer slide deck in the screen, and all participants should have their Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer Instructor Guide that was made available to you electronically. For those of you that prepare always, might have it in paper, some others might have it electronically. It is advisable that you look at it occasionally so that you can experience how to utilize these two components and how they interact. The Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer Instructor Guide has thumbnails with each of the slides that are being presented along with talking points for each of the slides. John and I will be demonstrating how easy it is to utilize this material by purposely reading off some of the scripts during the presentation. However, since the materials are designed for a three-hour session, we will skip some of the slides quickly. Special thanks to all of those that participated in the pilot in November 2015 that helped us produce this new version of the Trainee Trainer material. We're using a new technology platform for the first time today, which is designed to accommodate hundreds of callers. We hope to host thousands of callers at some point with your help by spreading the word about these resources. We encourage participants to utilize the question and answer function of this platform, which should be visible on the right-hand side of your screen. Please ask questions at any time. I will be monitoring all questions, and if we are unable to answer all of them during this session, we will attach a question and answers document along with all the presentation materials. As you should know, these and previous Town Hall meetings have been recorded and are available for future reference at the FDIC website in the Money Smart for Small Business section. For those that are able to multitask, as I said earlier, you should have the Trainee Trainer Instructor Guide available to you in paper or in another screen to be able to easily follow this presentation. We did not customize anything on the instruction guide so that you could grow familiar with this resource and think how it could be customized as you attend this session. Usually, in a Trainee Trainer session, participants like you are advised to have the participant's guide instead. However, since we're doing this virtually, we thought it easier to provide the instructor guide because it has thumbnails with the PowerPoint that we are projecting. The instructor guide has many of the elements that the participant guide has, but the participant guide does not have the thumbnails. Another difference is that the participant guide has the Managing Cash Flow Module Instructor and Participant Guide embedded in the document because we use that module to showcase the elements of the Money Smart for Small Business modules. Both guides have a glossary of terms. Both guides have a glossary of terms and success tips, and also an oversimplified version of the entire program, which is the Money Smart for Small Business Modules Matrix. The Money Smart for Small Business Modules Matrix is a detailed overview of the 13 modules that comprise Money Smart for Small Business curriculum. As I explained earlier, we will follow up with any unanswered or specific questions. Okay, we have a question in the queue. It says I'm logged into video. Should I be hearing audio? Thank you. The agenda shown actually is a three-hour Trainee Trainer Session agenda. However, we aim to accomplish the same objectives, although we will go over the topics in much less depth that we advise to cover when you actually host this training for your future trainers or instructors. Particularly, when your pool of instructors includes volunteers, you might need to devote possibly an entire day to discuss how and why certain topics are presented a certain way, and if your organization presents different modules in collaboration with other organizations, that would likely require a separate orientation process. So we've covered the first part already. We covered the welcome part. And at the learning objective session, we will review the objectives for the three-hour Trainee Training Session. Today's review of the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum will be very brief. We will cover what it is, how it was created, who can benefit, how they benefit. We will also review 13 modules followed by a quick zoom in rather than a deep dive into one of them, and that module will be the Managing Cash Flow. Finishing up, we will talk about how to join the Money Smart for Small Business Alliance, how to start using the Money Smart for Small Business program, and we will go over some success tips to help you host a successful Money Smart for Small Business Trainee Trainer program. We will not have any breaks. And based on what you told us at the registration process, we know that more than half of the attendees today are currently Money Smart for Small Business members. We hope that you join the alliance after this event. 21% we know represent financial institutions and 48% are nonprofits. At this time, we want to test our brand-new technology, and we're going to be asking you to please respond to two polls. This will help us assess how much you know about Money Smart for Small Business already. Today, you have the first poll. Are you currently using Money Smart for Small Business? We're beginning to see the answers. We're going to show the results in just a few more seconds. At this time, we're going to close the poll so that you can see the answers. Speaking a minute, so we should probably skip the next poll. But this is engaging because it does give us an opportunity to see who's been using the program. And apparently, we have a variety of answers. So we have a good portion of people that have been using for less than a year, others about 20% for more than a year, and many callers who have not decided yet. Okay, we're going to continue. Once again, while we wait for the polling to close, I want to remind participants that we haven't customized this presentation at all because we wanted you to experience how it looks like, and hopefully, as I said earlier, you can begin to think how you're going to customize it. So this is like, we're not actually going to do an icebreaker, but it does show you a couple of ideas that we present for instruction so that we can use it at their classroom. The purpose of this slide is to establish learning objectives for the three-hour session, but as I said earlier, we should be able to accomplish many of these even though we're going to cover these topics in less length. The Money Smart for Small Business is an instructor-led business curriculum that was collaboratively developed between the FDIC and the SBA, as you heard earlier, and it provides an introductory business training for aspiring and existing entrepreneurs. Even though we have heard from a lot of Money Smart for Alliance members and a lot of existing entrepreneurs who have actually been in business even greater than 10 years, find the material very useful, particularly one of our most recently developed resources, which is the Cash Flow Module. The Money Smart for Small Business Curriculum was created in response to assist financial institutions and community organizations to equip the entrepreneurs, prepare them to apply for a loan, and develop a business plan, also to help entrepreneurs think, to have a deep and sustainable impact in the community and to spur economic activity. So when our SBA representative explained the mission of SBA, that clearly explains the reason why both agencies are partnering in developing these types of resources for entrepreneurs. Clearly, financial institutions and community organizations can benefit. SBA technical assistance partners, including Small Business Development Centers, Women's Business Centers, Veteran Outreach Centers, are the types of organizations that we want to reach with these resources. There's also several other local government programs that usually partner with us, including economic development departments, chambers of commerce, business chambers, trade associations, even independent small business consultants that often work with groups like SCORE that is also part of the SBA Technical Assistance Network, or my work as volunteers or as staff members of other small business development organizations. Financial institutions and community organizations benefit, obviously, because they have a ready-to-use tool, which they can use easily, and also helps them to have a standard so that they can use the same information every time, even though they might have a different pool of volunteers. They always have the same raw materials to facilitate a class on different topics. Aspiring and existing entrepreneurs benefit from the different topics, as I explained earlier, and most of the modules, as you're going to learn in just a little bit, include the beginning talking points. But some of the Alliance members can make some of the modules as long as one day long. Sometimes, they make it a week long, combining with other resources they might have available. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to John Olson, who's going to provide us with an overview of the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum.
Okay, thank you, Paula. And good afternoon, everyone. My name's John Olson. I'm a Community Affairs Specialist in the Atlanta Region. I work out of the Montgomery, Alabama field office. So let's get started with a brief review of the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum. We're going to introduce you to each of the 13 modules and do an expanded review of one module. I'll briefly describe each module that we go through and how best to use it. Remember that detailed information on the Money Smart for Small Business modules can be found in the matrix that was provided in today's handout.
John, just in case. Oh, there you go. You're moving the slides. Thank you.
I tried to space for... Okay, let's get into the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum components. Let's talk about the three common components that are found in each of the modules. You'll find a fully scripted instructor guide. You'll find a participant guide. You'll find overhead slides. You'll also find PowerPoint slides that can be used as visual aids. The instructor guide is a roadmap for presenting the modules. It includes the purpose and objectives of each of the modules. It also includes a detailed lesson plan, and also, as I mentioned, it includes overhead slides that can be used for visual aids. The Money Smart modules can be taught in any manner. They generally take from 60 to 90 minutes. In addition to grounding the participants in the basics, the curriculum serves as a foundation for more advanced training and technical assistance. The Money Smart curriculum modules on this screen, you will see the 10 original modules that were launched in 2012 on the left side. The three newly created modules are on the right side of the screen. The next few slides will provide details about each of the Money Smart for Small Business For Banking Services, it will introduce banking products and services available to aspiring and existing entrepreneurs. It may be best for business owners at early stages or those who are seeking a loan from a financial institution. The Credit Reporting Module highlights the impact of credit reports on the operation and growth of a business. It identifies credit reports and other systems used to assess the risk of extending credit to entrepreneurs and small business owners.
John, I would like to add to what you just explained, that both the Banking and the Credit Modules are usually combined with other Money Smart curriculums, and hopefully, many of those in the call are aware that Money Smart for Small Business is just one of the elements of the entire Money Smart suite. But there are other Money Smart curriculums for adults, for older adults, and other segmented populations that you might find useful. Thank you, John. Go on.
Thank you. I'd like to also point out on the Credit Reporting Module that it may be best for companies in all stages of business development, especially for those who may have concerns about their credit scores or those who may plan to apply for loans. The Financial Management Module identifies financial management practices, rules and tools commonly available for small businesses, and how these tools work. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, especially business owners who are interested in obtaining a loan from a financial institution. The Insurance Module identifies the types of insurance that small businesses should understand and consider. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, especially those who do not yet have insurance or find some insurance terms and concepts to be confusing. The Organizational Types Module analyzes the most common legal entities or structures. It may be best for companies in early stages of business development.
John, I would like to take advantage of the opportunity to explain a little bit more about the Organizational Types Module. In the registration process, we did have a few questions coming in about this module, and they asked whether this module provides information about the different taxing for each corporation? And the answer is no. This module does not provide that level of detail. First of all, because we try to make this type of resource available as widely as possible to the entire United States population, but that's when your local partnerships come into play. We encourage organizations considering to use this module to partner with their local CPAs, and they usually should be able to provide the localized information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula. And the Record Keeping Module will identify practical record-keeping techniques. This module may be best for companies in all stages of business development, but especially those who lack formal record-keeping disciplines. The Risk Management Module identifies the common risks associated with the small business and how to manage those risks. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, and especially those who want to learn about minimizing internal and external risk to their business. Next is the Selling a Business and Succession Planning Module. This one explains how to establish an exit strategy for a business. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, but especially those who plan to sell or transfer ownership to others in the future. The Tax Planning Module introduces entrepreneur or participants to tax requirements at the local, state, and federal levels. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, but especially those who have not yet set up systems and processes for paying taxes in a timely manner. The Time Management Module explains the concept of time management and why it is important to small businesses. It may be best for companies in all stages of business development, since the nature of small businesses is that they are typically short-staffed. Time management may work well if combined with the Organization Types Module, as it fosters thinking about how to fulfill the needs of businesses.
Thanks, John. Now that you've given us good ideas about how to combine these modules with other modules, I would also like to jump in to suggest the audience to consider combining the Record Keeping Module with the Tax Planning Module. We hear from several of our Alliance members that these two modules are very popular during tax season, and they are very commonly combined. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And now we'll look at the module about is small business ownership a good fit for you? This is actually one of the three new modules that was introduced last year, and this module helps aspiring entrepreneurs think about the realities of starting a business and their readiness to start a business. It's probably best for aspiring entrepreneurs at the early stages of their decision-making, but existing business owners can also benefit from the self-assessments in the participant In the Planning for a Healthy Business Module, this is the second of the three new modules and introduces aspiring entrepreneurs to the benefit of planning and making smart decisions. It may be best for aspiring entrepreneurs who are thinking about starting a business, but it's also important to clarify that aspiring entrepreneurs are not expected to be ready to develop a business plan after attending this class. However, the participants should be knowledgeable about the resources that they may be able to use for developing a business plan. Managing Cash Flow is a great overview of cash flow and how to manage cash flow. This is the third new module, and we recommend offering it after the Financial Management Now let's do an expanded review of the Managing Cash Flow Module. Just want to point out that the pre-test is common to all of the modules. That would be one of the first things that is done at the beginning of training, and then we'll also talk about the post-test when we get to that point. The goals of the Managing Cash Flow are twofold. We want to provide training participants an expanded overview of this module. We want participants to experience the module as if they were aspiring or existing entrepreneurs enrolled in the Managing Cash Flow class. Managing Cash Flow is a highly interactive learning experience. In the Money Smart Trainee Trainer PowerPoint presentation, you can recognize that we are looking at actual Cash Flow Module slides when you see the footer, Managing Cash Flow, on the bottom right-hand of the slides. Okay, let's begin a walkthrough of the Cash Flow Module. Okay, I talked a little bit about this pre-test portion of the module already. However, just want to cover a couple of additional comments about the pre-test. Pre-test will gauge the entrepreneur's prior knowledge and assess learning of each of the modules. This is a learning tool that's taken before the class for the pre-test, and then a post-test is conducted at the conclusion of the training. Included with each module is an agenda that has an easy-to-follow, customizable agenda. Trainers can decide to customize the module to fit their needs or those of their participants. The next two slides, 45 and 46, relate to learning objectives of the Managing Cash Flow. And keep in mind, again, that each module will include learning objectives. This particular module introduces the basics of cash flow management. When participants complete this training module, they'll understand the importance of cash flow management. Bob and the Wired Cup is an exercise found in the Cash Flow Management. This is a theoretical case study. Aspiring and existing entrepreneurs participating in the Managing Cash Flow workshop are asked to be an advisor to Bob. to be an advisor to Bob. So the participants will be acting as an advisor to Bob. The entrepreneurs will have to review the Wired Cup's cash flow issue and make recommendations as they see fit.
John, I also want to add that only the three recently added modules do have these case studies, and this is part of our improvement effort. Hopefully, as we continue to develop more modules and update others, we will have more case studies. But thus far, have received very positive feedback. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Paula. This is just an example of the Cash Flow Continuum. The Cash Flow Continuum Icebreaker is developed to assess the cash flow knowledge of the entrepreneurs On this slide, we have an opening balance sheet for the Wired Cup. The purpose of this slide is to introduce a balance sheet to the entrepreneurs and to demonstrate that it tells a story with numbers. Let's take a look at a few notes about debt. As we all know, it takes money to start a business. Existing entrepreneurs need to know how they will be able to finance their business. They will need to know their personal credit score. They should be developing a positive relationship with local bankers in case they need to request financing from a financial institution. Financial institutions will look at personal credit scores to make a lending decision. On this slide, we look at three basic and important views, highlights, that view three topics of cash flow analysis. On this cash conversion cycle diagram, which can be found in the participant guide, you can learn the cycle of the cash flow process. The skill is to know how long it will take to complete the cycle. In the cash flow diagram that can be found in the participant guide, this describes a good way through the use of a diagram to describe cash flow, as shown here in the diagram. This particular diagram represents how cash flows in and out of the system or business operate. The water represents cash flow flowing in and out of the business.
Thank you, John. I just wanted to add that the point of showing that slide was to illustrate that we make an effort to convey very complex concepts in easy ways. So we have thus far found that this graph has been very useful in explaining this concept. If you want to check it out, in the Quarter Three Town Hall, we had an organization explaining how she used, actually, I think, a couple of days, just explaining this concept. And she broke down this chart into several pieces that she explained in several hours. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Paula. You're absolutely correct, because in preparing financial statements, we would not use such a diagram, but we would use a cash flow statement that tells the same story with using numbers. A cash flow statement is included. In the Wired Cup example, the cash flow statement is a valuable decision-making tool for business owners, investors, and creditors. It allows everyone to make smart, informed decisions about a business. This helps entrepreneurs to think about cash flow projections, looking into the future, and making smart decisions to ensure positive cash flow. This slide reflects an opportunity for a group discussion, and is included in the participant The instructor may ask the class to act as an advisor to Bob. This can be a great opportunity to lean into a short discussion about what Bob should or could do. This is an opportunity for role-playing, and there are many possible solutions to Bob's cash flow problem. We also want to point out what not to do with respect to cash flow. And this slide highlights decisions entrepreneurs should not make when faced with a cash flow Key points to remember are shown on this slide. And each of the modules will have a section similar to this, related to key points to remember for each of the modules. The toolkit of resources is available in the participant guide. And this concludes an expanded overview of the Cash Flow Management Module. We also want to talk about evaluation best practices. So including the review of this particular module, you will notice that there is an evaluation page for the participants to evaluate what they had learned during the session. Remember that we start with a pre-test for each module, and end each session with a post-test to assess what the participants have learned. In the evaluation form, we encourage the use of this for two main reasons. We want to evaluate the quality and impact of the modules. We want to help identify what may be next. The participant guide for each module includes an evaluation form on the last page. These forms can be effective tools for gauging immediate reactions to the class. And we can ask such questions as, what were the most compelling learning points of the Managing Cash Flow Module? And what steps have you taken to apply Managing Cash Flow principles into your own business? These are some ways to identify which modules your participants will most want and need. So at the end of the class, we should ask, what should happen next? We should look at the parking lot for questions that may not have been answered during review of the modules. We also may want to consider interviewing guest experts for their ideas.
At this point, we do want to pause for a few seconds or a minute to get questions from the participants. And while they cue their questions in the system, I would like to address some questions that we received during the registration process. So there was a question about whether we are planning to provide or create other modules that have to do with venture capital. So the answer is not about that specific topic. However, we do welcome your recommendations, and we want to be responsive to your needs and suggestions. As a matter of fact, the three most recently developed modules were developed in response to the alliance members who are so kind to let us know how do they experience the program, and whether they think areas can be improved, or other resources should be made available. Another question that I received was, how can financial literacy coaches use this material? So financial literacy coaches who might not have training programs available in the format for which these materials were developed, which, as John explained earlier, these are instructor-led resources, and should ideally be delivered in a classroom, in-person setting, anywhere between 60 to 90 minutes. But if that format is not available, and only the financial coaching, something that we find, since all of these resources are readily available and downloadable by anyone, actually, nobody has to sign up as an alliance member in order to download any of the modules, some coaches do recommend their clients, and by clients, I mean their business, aspiring and existing entrepreneurs, to download some of those modules. And they advise them to go over certain sections, maybe do some of the exercises, and catch up in the next session. So that's one way we've learned this can be used. As we have explained repeatedly, these materials are free of copyright, and they are made available in text-accessible format, so that anyone can modify them however they see fit. We have found, we know of a number of organizations that combine modules, or they add more content to the materials that we make available already. That's another way that it can be used in a flexible way. So I have another question. Could these materials be used in our local university? Yes, absolutely. That is a great opportunity to advertise these for universities. That's something that we're working on. We're very much trying to appeal this program to universities very recently. Community Affairs Specialist organized a presentation of Money Smart for Small Business to a university system in Minnesota. And they were very interested in considering this material, because it has been developed by two federal agencies, and they find the materials to be objective. We have a lot of financial education resources available, and that have been developed by financial institutions. But a lot of organizations, particularly universities and local governments, really find the Money Smart for Small Business useful, because it is objective, and it's not trying to sell anything. As a matter of fact, I know of a number of cities that do require their partners to utilize Money Smart for Small Business to host Money Smart modules, module classes, for clients who are interested in doing business with those cities. And that has been a partnership that has worked successfully. Another question I have is, is there a formal or informal network of instructors in a given area that organizations can identify or access? Thank you for the question. We actually have a list of the organizations we know of are utilizing Money Smart for Small Business, or Money Smart curriculums in our website. You just have to dig in a little bit for it. You go to the Money Smart for Small Business website, and you should find a heading that talks about the Money Smart Alliance. And within that section, you should be able to find a downloadable Excel spreadsheet with all of the organizations that we know are using. We encourage you for those kinds of questions, whenever you're interested in finding an organization locally, reach to your community affairs specialist. And as a matter of fact, we have a section later on that is devoted to how to use this organization, and how to find other contacts. So we will expand on this. And we have several other questions, but unfortunately, we're going to have to pause on taking and answering more questions at this time. If we have time left over, we will come back to them. Otherwise, we do have a record of it, and as I explained, we will publish answers to those questions, along with this presentation and the audio file whenever we have it available. Thank you. Go to the next slide.
Okay, thank you, Paula, for those comments. I lost control. Okay, here we go. Okay, now let's transition to action steps for presenting the Money Smart for Small Business As an instructor, you can select the modules as you feel they are warranted. But as you think about the 13 modules, realize that they can be standalone, presented as standalone modules. They can also be presented by topic. They can be mix and match to meet the needs of your entrepreneurs as well. A suggestion is to begin with the two fundamental modules. Is Small Business Ownership a Good Fit for You? And Planning for a Healthy Business? Some financial institutions and community organizations offer classes once or twice a week for a number of weeks. A benefit of this approach is that you can plan and advertise an entire program ahead Backing up to the previous slide for just a moment. Keep in mind that we encourage instructors to be flexible. While it's a great idea to have a sequence of modules, in mind, be prepared to adapt your plans based on the participants' questions and feedback. In working with experts, a good idea may be to use guest experts to help with topics that you may not be familiar with. They can tell interesting stories and share real-life experiences about what to do or what not to do. However, remember when working with experts, provide them clear directions and parameters to ensure success for the workshop.
Okay, I think it is my turn now. So this is what we were talking about just a few minutes ago. We want to encourage all organizations who are considering to use the materials, not even sure that they're going to use it already, to join the alliance. And the reason why is because by joining the alliance, we are able to communicate with you directly whenever we find opportunities for you to learn more about our products, or whenever someone wants to partner with an organization elsewhere. By collecting information about who is interested in using the program, you are really contributing greatly to the impact that we're trying to make in the community. We used to have Money Smart Alliance list that was quite lengthy. We had about 1,000 members. But ever since, we've tried to modernize by simplifying the process to join the alliance, which is now only a couple of minutes long, and it's only a matter of completing a form online by following the website that I'm providing to you on the screen, we have found that a lot of the information we had was outdated. So we are in an effort to regain all of those members that we collected over the years. Money Smart for Small Business has been around since 2012, but the Money Smart Suite is actually celebrating its 15th anniversary. We want to make sure that we have a current list. And we do get a lot of phone calls from organizations, particularly after we participate in outreach efforts, like conferences, national conferences. People always want to know who's interested in partnering in their community. So please, I encourage you to join the alliance, and that way we can connect you with others that might be interested in putting together a program. As far as downloading the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum, actually, any Money Smart curriculum is downloadable. And the easiest thing to remember, actually, is FDIC Catalog. If you actually go to Google and you put FDIC catalog, the website pops up really easily, and you can download any Money Smart curriculum, as well as marketing materials, including flyers. We made an effort to translate a lot of our marketing materials. So Money Smart for Small Business modules were recently translated entirely into Spanish. But at this time, there's only one flyer that hasn't been translated into Spanish yet, and it is our newest flyer that's called 10 Reasons to Use Money Smart for Small Business, which is very good for organizations, to help organizations make a decision about joining the alliance. joining the alliance. This is preview of the actual webpage, and yeah, people are not seeing how I move my mouse. So I'm just going to refer on the left-hand side to some of the menus where you can find the information about other Money Smart products, like Money Smart for Adults for Young People or their adults. And the Train the Trainer Program going forward will have information about future town halls. These Money Smart for Small Business members have been holding our town halls on a quarterly basis for a couple of years, but users of other Money Smart products are also now gathering on a quarterly basis, and information about 2017 events will be updated in our webpage shortly. So please look for it, or better, join now so that you can have information about upcoming This is how the FDIC catalog looks like, and as you can see on the left-hand side, in the promotional items that's highlighted because it looks with a different color, you can see some of the flyers that I mentioned. And one thing that I want to advise you is, when you want to download the curriculum via the FDIC catalog, you have to create an account. And that's a process very easy, where you simply provide your email account, and you verify it, and then you're able to check out as a card any of the materials that you're interested in. It's an easy process. Well, this time I want to talk to you about some success tips, and I've interrupted John several times to give you success tips. But technically speaking, the success tips that I'm talking about are actually available in the instructor guide and in the participant guide. So I'm going to show you, I'm going to make an attempt to show you briefly, doesn't show, to show you briefly the actual instructor guide, and navigate through it quickly. Give us a second. Okay. I think you should be viewing the... No, it's not happening. So I'm simply going to go back to the power. Not happening. So the resources I was referring to are a plan of action template, the modules matrix, which John referred to earlier. The success tips section is actually on page 50 of your instructor guide. If you were good students and you had the resources that you were suggested to have, you should turn to page 50 of your instructor guide, and you will notice there's several success tips in there that include giving instructions and classroom setup, facilitating discussions, using chart paper, handouts, et cetera. The most interesting part probably is a section called Accommodating Students with Disabilities on page 56, which a lot of organizations have found very useful, and they give us very positive feedback on that. So at this point, I want to recap that we have met our learning objectives today. So hopefully, you did, you have an understanding of what the Money Smart for Small Business Train the Trainer curriculum is, why it was created, who can benefit, how they benefit, and how to get it started. So I was pushing very heavily to convince you to join the alliance because truly, that is the best way we can, we can have an awareness about who's interested in the program, and you, on the other hand, can learn about upcoming webinars. As I explained earlier, this is the first time we're using a technology that will allow us to reach hundreds of participants, and that is our goal, and thus far, hopefully, is going successfully. And we will have many more webinars. I want to mention that I appreciate the participants who provided ideas and suggestions for upcoming webinars. Usually, on our town hall sessions, we keep quiet. FDIC and SBA actually use the opportunity to hear from alliance members. This time around, we've used this time to present this tool because it has recently been developed and because it was very long awaited by many of the alliance members. But usually, we have actual alliance members talking about their experience, and this is their, the opportunity for alliance members to ask questions from each other. And our next event in the first quarter of 2016 is likely going to feature at least a couple of alliance members. Just like all other modules, we have key points to remember in this presentation, and I want to remind you, the curriculum is free. It is a standalone product. It can be taught in any order or combined. It is a complete package. I mentioned earlier, I plugged the other Money Smart curriculums. I hope that you learn an awareness about that. In my extensive outreach last year, participating in several national conferences, I found out that several alliance members were not aware that Money Smart for Small Business was part of a suite and that there were other Money Smart curriculums available. It is customizable, and it has objective information from the FDIC available in two languages. And one thing that I want to bring to your attention is, I think all of us follow statistics about entrepreneurs, and I think one of the promising emerging markets is immigrants or minorities who actually start businesses that are very hype and fast-paced. We want to make sure they stay in business, and that's why we make this type of resource available. So making it available in Spanish hopefully helps you to tap into new markets and new clients that you haven't considered before. Okay. Being that we've reached the hour, we did not have time to check questions left over in the parking lot, but we promise to get back to you. Thank you so much for your participation today. My information is available in the screen, and we will make an effort to respond to every question that was pending. We have a final poll just to learn how the technology worked, and I hope you will spare a few more seconds to let us know how was your experience with this technology. Well, we can tell by looking at the responses that the technology was successful thus far. We will work hard on addressing any technical difficulties that some of the participants experienced. Please let us know in detail what were your problems so that we can address those and better serve you. Once again, thank you very much for making time today, and at this time, we are going to end this presentation.
Thank you. Operator? And this does conclude today's conference. We do thank you for your participation. You may disconnect your lines at this time.